Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, May fifteenth, 2024 meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. Will say today that I want to welcome everyone and today is a little different day for us because we're on the road. We started the day at Law Day at Quincy District Court and today the city of Quincy is hosting the commissioners. So we're here in what is known as Old City Hall, City of Quincy. We're in the board and commission room. So we are live and being recorded by our friends at Quincy, QA TV, Mark Crosby and John Cleary with us today. So calling this meeting to order. I'm now going to ask everyone to stand and join me.
The place of allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
A little more while we're here in Quincy about this building built in eighteen forty-four, Quincy Granite, advertised nationwide as the single, the last masonry building still used as a house of government and it's been said since eighteen forty-four. Obviously, there's been changes over the years and then two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, thirteen million dollars was spent reconditioning this building, merging it with the building out back and all many city departments are still housing this building. So we're pretty proud of this building and it's got a lot of artifacts. So if anyone has the time, we have a, the mayor has a full museum here as well as other pictures and brick and black all over the building. That is original information. Room call, Commissioner State.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Number three, executive session. There's no executive session today. Number four, minutes of the open session meeting of April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the meeting minutes of April twenty-four as presented.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five, appointments. We have done public comment and all of our meetings, we have a session for public comment live and for people who attend our meetings by Zoom, which is not the case today. So I'll ask the county director, Mr. Cronin, if he's had anyone that has reached out and wants to have any public comment at today's meeting.
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to old business. I have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration today, Commissioner State and police.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move the following matters. This one concerns the Norfolk Agricultural High School. Move approval of the notice of contingent employment for Ally Winkler of Brockton as a substitute instructor at the rate stated and the effective date of appointment will be five sixteen twenty-four. So moved.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next several are President's Golf Course and their title changes. Notice of job title change for Edward Brody McDivitt of Boston as seasonal golf course associate, rate stated effective five nine twenty-four.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye. The next two are the same exact thing. Their job title change, Mr. Chairman, at the same date and rate. So I'll move approval of Suprina Tay of Holbrook, Mass. and Anthony Goncalvo of High Park, again, as the seasonal golf associate, rate stated and a date is five nine twenty-four. So moved.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye. That is all we have.
Number nine, payroll expense warrants for approval.
I need the sheet. I'd be glad to move it if you give it to me.
We're not at home, so we might be a little.
Is it? All right. Sure. I get you. No problem. Be happy to do it. All right. We'll move the first one is for the, let's see what this is for. I believe this is a warrant dated oh five fifteen twenty-four, warrant twenty-four dash forty-five twenty-three, and I believe this is for the payroll. We move the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars, eighty-seven cents. So moved.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next, we have warrant twenty-four dash forty-five twenty-three. That's the same one. Forgive me. This is a little different format today. Our next one, I move approval for warrant number twenty-four dash forty-five, and this is for the sum of a hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, fifty-eight cents, and I move that be approved. This also is a payroll warrant.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I believe that's it. Is that correct?
That's all.
That's all we have. Two there and two there. So so ahead.
With regard to the personnel papers, we don't have them in front of us. So I would suggest that they be stamped in our names as we voted it.
Yes, I would move that we authorize the use of our stamps for the personnel papers from Gettleville.
Would you make a second to use a stamp on our personnel papers because they're in Gettleville today? All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten, before the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, Director John Cronin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Briefly, the American Rescue Plan Act activities are progressing. We are moving on to our next closeout with the town of Stone and right behind that will be the town of Norfolk. We recently received information from the county of Plymouth, which took an action to extend all of the expiring ARPA contracts with their communities. As the commissioners may know, contracts were signed to terminate June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, six months before the obligation period ends.
What town is that from?
Plymouth County.
Oh, Plymouth County.
So what Plymouth County did is they universally extended the deadline through to September thirtieth, notwithstanding the activities of each of the communities and their closeout plan status. We plan to take a different track. We're evaluating each of the closeout plans in close consultation with the communities to assess their readiness to expend and obligate the funds for the remainder of this period. So once the closeout plan is done, they'll receive an extension notice from us and that will effectively allow them to move forward with their planned closeout. But until they receive an approved closeout from the county, their funds and their obligations will end in June. So our hope and expectation is to have all of them completed over the next five to six weeks. And at this point, I don't see any difficulty getting there. But at this point, there are no ARPA awards this week. We may have one next week. There's one in the queue right now. We'll evaluate that in the next several days. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of Director Cronin relative to?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, through you, of course, a member of the Waymouth City Council was in attendance today and asked if they had applied for all of the ARPA money or if there were still some things not applied for. So when you get a chance, could you follow up on that? I didn't know for sure if they were maybe in the portal or if they hadn't applied yet and if we could just follow up for that council member. I appreciate it. It's Waymouth.
Would you like that follow up to go through you, Commissioner? Or would you like to share the information of who this was so I can?
Oh, I, it's whatever. It's just, I mean, the person asked me if I could find out for her. She was just curious.
I'll share it with you then.
Okay.
I'll give you an update. Thank you.
Thanks. It's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This concludes number ten for today. Under number ten, there's a request here from Norfolk County Agricultural School for twenty-five thousand in ARPA funding. And I'm going to ask you, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular item is a request to fund through ARPA, a study relative to the Kemp Hall HVAC project. Last year, the commissioners approved a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to the agricultural high school for an HVAC upgrade. In order for the project to receive proper specifications for bidding, they need to have the project studied and evaluated. Prior award did not include such language. This past week, myself and Mr. Buckley met with the superintendent, Mr. Martin, for a monthly conversation and following up on the status of that grant, Mr. Martin indicated he needed some relief to fund a study. Consequently, we asked for him to send a request in, which he has, and with the commissioner's approval of this request today, I'll prepare an ARPA request, put it into the portal and have it ready for hopeful eventual action within the next several weeks. So that is the background on this particular item. I think the commissioners understand that once the funding is approved, we'll turn the matter over to our procurement team who will promptly investigate House Doctor Solutions to get this particular contract up and going as quick as possible. Because one of the items that I mentioned to Mr. Martin was the schools in this case are not unlike every community. We're up against a timeline to encumber these funds and obligate them. So our hope is that the study can be initiated without delay, have a result back, use the content to bid, and then award a contract clearly before the end of this year. So it sounds like a long time, but it's really not when you talk about the bidding process. So that's the purpose of this request. And with a vote today, I'll be happy to prepare the ARPA application on their behalf and get it back to you shortly.
And this is ARPA certified, approved after they, they go through the process.
Right. Once, once it clears the review of our auditors, I'll bring it back like I would any other ARPA award for your final approval.
Okay. Comment, questions?
Yeah, this was great. So through you, of course, Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Cronin. So just to be clear, the agricultural school and any entity under the commissioners is under the same scrutiny and level of guidelines?
That's right. That's correct.
Oh, that's great. And so, and you communicated that to Mr. Martin of the Aggie School that the deadlines are closing in?
Oh, yes. We have an extensive dialogue.
So they know that. Okay, great. Oh, that's great. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like a motion on directing the county director to prepare an ARPA grant up to twenty-five thousand dollars. The purpose is stated.
So that, Mr. Chairman, if you may, I'll make a motion that we approve a request for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School for ARPA funding in the sum of money up to twenty-five thousand dollars in order to secure engineering services for the preparation of construction documents and related construction administration services for the upgrade of Kemp Hall HVAC equipment. So moved.
Second. Would you make a second? Any discussion? Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous on the twenty-five thousand ARPA funding for the school. Number eleven, ARPA warrants approval.
None this week.
No warrants today. We're going to skip by number twelve. It's not one thirty and we're going to go to thirteen after one thirty. Number fourteen, March twenty twenty-four, trial balance acceptance. We have the March trial balance acceptance sheet in your package. Commission for your review and approval today. Just the trial balance of the county as of three thirty-one twenty-four. Any questions, Commissioner? Director Cronin, I'm sorry.
That's correct. Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So before you is the latest trial balance from our treasurer for your acceptance. I want to call out on the front page, there's a highlighted area, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. This amount reflects what the treasurer is tracking as a deficiency within the group insurance category for receivables. Following this announcement, I asked our human resources director to audit the employee share of the group insurance funds. She has identified a potential fund allocation matter that the treasurer is currently looking into. Effectively, what that means is there was a large portion of funds that were collected to have the mass teachers retirement system participants, and that fund may have been reallocated to a different fund. So the assistant treasurer is evaluating this find at this time, and I expect some kind of a correction or an answer on that by the time you look at the April trial balance.
We can sneak in.
You're accepting it. That's the vote.
Right.
Okay, good explanation. Questions, Commissioner State?
I can move approval of acceptance.
Acceptance.
Acceptance of the trial balance of three thirty-one twenty-four. I move approval of the amount of sixty-five million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, twelve cents. So moved.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. We need one fifteen, one thirty. Okay, now. Number fifteen, county engineering department service request. With us today is Patrick Kiggins, our county surveyor. I'm going to ask Patrick to come up and explain. Number fifteen on our agenda, looking for the commissioner's approval for land surveying services in the town of Norwood. Good afternoon, Patrick.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just real brief, Mike Ryan, the DPW director and town engineer in the town of Norwood, I reached out to him regarding any projects he needed assistance with that were upcoming, and he has a drainage project in a residential neighborhood, and we're going to, he asked us to provide the land surveying base mapping and so that they can do the design in-house and use ARPA funds to, they're going to apply for ARPA funds to do the drainage repair. So we looked at the job and it's within our wheelhouse that we can get it done in the timeframe he needs it. So I request a motion to approve the request for services.
Any questions, Commissioners? I have all paperwork here. Patrick's in order. We're in order, I believe.
Right.
Plenty of explanation here. We want to work with the town of Norwood as we always do.
Sure.
By way of explanation, because we're in Quincy today, the county has had an engineering department probably for a hundred years. They supply valuable service to a lot of towns. We assist to a lot of towns. The original origin of our engineering department goes back to when the county actually serviced and maintained. How many miles of roads do you think, Patrick?
I wouldn't say often, but it's hundreds of miles.
Every, every, every one of the twenty-eight cities and towns has county roads. That function has changed. We don't maintain the roads, but we, we maintain legally access over the mid-work. It has to be done through our engineer. And it works. We work with the towns in that fashion. So if, if there's no other questions.
The motion to approve.
Requires the motion and a signature of the commissioners and we go to the next step.
All right. Did you, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I maybe heard you wrong. Did you say some of the ARPA funds on this or just?
I believe, I believe the town to, when they put it out to bid for the contract, they're going to do the, we're going to do the survey. The town's going to do the design and bid specs and they can put it out to bid and they like to apply for ARPA funds because I think it falls in that category.
Okay, well, we're not, ARPA's not funding our work. We're doing the survey.
Yeah.
That's what they want us to do.
The drainage repair. They're at the town level.
Okay, I got mixed up there. All right. So I move, if you want, Mr. Chairman, I move to prove.
No other questions?
The request for the town of Norwood DPW for land surveying services for a topographical existing condition survey on a portion of Rockland Road and Wedgeford Drive in Norwood to be used for design and improvements to the drainage system. So moved.
Second. Would you make a second at all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Is there more on here, Patrick? Another side of the subject?
Do we need to sign one of these? Associate approval?
Yep. Okay. Yeah, if you could all three sign one. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. What we do is when we do a mailing to the abutters, we mail a copy. That's where everybody knows it's been through the town and through channels.
Right.
Next.
Next, as a request for the commissioners to, we see the petition from the town of Stone Select Board last fall and five abutters, and we've been working on that through the winter and the spring. It's at a point where it's ready to have a hearing so and be filed. So to have a hearing, we need to file the petition. Our request is to file it as docket two zero three seven. If you can have a motion to file the petition of docket two zero three seven.
Okay, this item is been before us for almost a year.
Yeah.
Two parts. We took care of the first part of it. This is for the assistance to the town of Stone on Page Street, on a Page Street discontinuous, docket number two oh three seven. And as Patrick has outlined, we need a vote to schedule a hearing for further work on Page Street, for further work on discontinuance, again, docket number two oh three seven. And we, is Patrick suggesting Wednesday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-four for the date of the hearing. That is a good date for us. But any discussion about it? I'd like to continue, not continue. I'd like to schedule.
No problem scheduling. So in the packet, when I reviewed the information that was sent to me into us, I saw a letter from twenty twenty-three and then there was a letter from twenty twenty-four. One was from Chair Roberts and one was from Chair Cavy. Are we talking about the same street here?
This, this, this new petition from the fall of twenty twenty-three and additional documents from twenty twenty-four is related to Page Street that's located on the west side of Route twenty-four.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with the one that's on the east side that we did last fall.
We did one of those.
That was on the east side of twenty.
And they did tell us they were going to come back quickly for the other.
This is the comeback.
This was the comeback. Okay. All right. Good. That's fine. Good. All right. Well, I'll make Stone happy. They've been curious about this, we'll say. I'll move that we approve, I move that we file the petition that the commissioners will act on this matter and that we vote the petition to just continue a portion of the layout of Page Street dated ten twenty-two eighteen seventy-two in Stone, Mass. And the petition be filed as docket number two oh three seven, due in order in our minutes located west of Amvat Route twenty-four. And it said, hearing for this matter will be held and scheduled for Wednesday, June twelfth in the county of Norfolk administrative offices in Dedham, Mass. as outlined and presented. Sufficient?
Second. Would you make a second? Any further comment? On the petition that town of Stone, docket number two oh three seven, Page Street discontinuance, the county commissioners hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June twelfth at one thirty PM at six fourteen High Street Out Regular Office. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll have the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is the Select Board get notified of this one?
Yes.
And other abutters?
In the, in the packet, I included an example of the abstract.
Yep.
And that has all the information on it and that goes out to the, it gets, the petition gets posted in two public places and in the town, it gets served to the town clerk. And then letters, return receipt requests are sent to all the town boards, police and fire, DPW, and then also to all the abutters.
Right.
That are in the media area.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
That's great.
This concludes the matters with the engineering department today.
What do you need?
Your Page Two.
My Page Two? Sure.
That was item number fifteen.
Right. Almost done.
Before, it's all right. Before we go back to one thirty, it's not one thirty yet. So we're going to go to the county director. At number eighteen, report to the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just by way of viewing your agenda, there is no bid opening today with respect to monitoring that timeframe, just as a reminder. But on my report, just a few items. First, this evening, you will, you will note that we have posted to the commissioners that a quorum will be present this evening at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School for the next quarterly advisory board meeting. This evening, we expect the FY twenty-five budget to be under consideration for a vote. The meeting for the finance committee will precede the advisory board at five. The advisory board will follow at six. And again, that's at the Norfolk County Agricultural School. Mr. Buckley has sent out multiple notices to advisory board members and contacted several personally to inform them of this date. With respect to this evening, it's a normal agenda. Mr. Ryan Tosca has prepared a transfer that is dominated by the Norfolk County Agricultural School. There'll be a brief description of what they are looking to achieve. As the commissioners know from my last update, I'll be looking for an item that you previously approved, seeking to expand the scope of work for Stone Consulting to perform an OPEB analysis report for the county. And in addition to those items on the agenda, there will also be a presentation or recommendation from the county's chief information officer to the advisory board, seeking consensus on a recommendation that each of the advisory board members now adopt a county issued email. The commissioners may be aware that through public transparency and other directors at the state level, public servants, both appointed and elected, are encouraged to use a publicly issued email to receive and exchange all public information. This protects the recipient from using their private devices or private host server emails in the event there was any kind of legal inquiry into the business of a body or an individual. These public domains ensures that the individuals will not have to submit their personal devices for legal scrutiny. So it's highly recommended. Sam will give the advisory board a recommendation this evening on his opinion and through consensus will then follow with action to procure additional licensure for the advisory board members starting sometime in July. And from that point on, we will send any and all public information to the board through those emails. So it's a bit of a policy shift, but after speaking with the chairs of the finance committee and the advisory board, they agree. So throughout the past week, the commissioners may be aware there's a high profile case in Dedham Superior Court. I have been in close contact with the trial court security. There were multiple incidences this week involving visitors to the court seeking to gain entry as one of the approved observers of this case. Their activities have caught the attention of the trial court security because in one case they were queuing at or near our handicapped access ramp. So after a lot of conversation, the trial court selected to direct or redirect the occupants away from the county courthouse steps to allow free access for individuals with handicapped access needs. These individuals will not queue on the sidewalk. This particular case has drawn a daily attendance of individuals protesting or waiting to be heard or occupy the case. So it's a very busy environment and the trial courts are doing their best to keep it safe. They recognize the commissioners own the building and you have final say on access. So we'll keep the lines of communication open with them. I just wanted to let you know as this case progresses, things may change and I'll keep you informed of any such events. The commissioners may recall that they previously directed me to apply for an electric vehicle charging station or behind the registry of motor vehicles. That application has gone in and this morning I received confirmation that it has been accepted for review by the Eversource Electric Mobility Team. They're going to be reviewing the site host agreement and also undertake a technical review of the space that will be taken by this charging area. Over the next several days, I expect our colleague, Brian Loughlin, from Commonwealth Electrical Technologies to coordinate with Eversource for them to achieve the kind of answers and responses and access to the site that they need. I'll update the commissioners as soon as I hear anything further on the grant application, but it's a favorable development as we progress towards that item. This afternoon, the trial court's facility team continues their review of the county courthouses. Over the last several days, they've been conducting assessments. Today, they're at Dedham District Court and Dedham Superior Court. Our facilities team are escorting and answering questions for the trial court facility folks. Tomorrow, they'll be going to Stone District Court. The commissioners may recall seeing these assessments in the past. The courts do these cyclically. I believe it's at least annually, and they identify areas that as occupants of the building then would like to see improved. Some of them are safety, some of them are more flow of traffic. So if anything comes of them, I'll alert you, but I want to let you know that the state is in our buildings this week and we await their feedback. And the final items for the county commissioners' information, tomorrow I'll be attending the county director's meeting in Buzzards Bay. I believe it's almost a complete response from all county directors. We're, we did not meet last year, but we met the year before. The agenda includes a discussion of common interests on collective bargaining agreements. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Getting to Mezzaluna, maybe?
Mezzaluna? No, it's across the street from Mezzaluna, I believe. I'm very familiar with Mezzaluna.
Great place. Great place.
Frequently traveled when I went to school down there.
Wonderful.
It's in the water.
Uh, it is.
That's right.
Buzzards Bay, born. Yep.
Absolutely. It's a maritime grab. You know that area quite well.
Yes, I do.
It was the one that was sad to see. It was there for years and closed down the restaurant on the way to Wareham. Was it Lynch's? Was it Lynch's?
Uh, yes, I know what you mean. Didn't have a ship out front or something?
It was there for years.
Yeah.
Closed down. But all right.
Okay, any questions of the reports from the director?
No, it's, it's great to see movement on our, you know, getting the charging stations. I always had a. I was at a function in Canton at the, it's only called Dunkin' Brands, it's called Inspire, I guess it is. They bought it out, but anyway, they have the charging stations in, in the private area. More and more, we're seeing the need for that, so keep us posted, that's, that's great news, that's great. I also wanted to do, if I could, uh, commend our maintenance department for a great job getting our building ready today for the Law Day. John Bigdony and his staff were at just some extra time, and I understand getting it ready for, you know, special Law Day ceremony. So, you know, thanks to them and kudos.
I have a question. Uh, if we are pursuing electric charging stations in our courts, Superior Wallace District, does that leave Quincy out?
Yeah, we don't in Quincy.
I know that.
Yeah, it would.
We're not going to be charged with the responsibility.
No.
Okay, well, I hope the state, well, I'm sure they'll follow up on the building, hopefully. Okay. Okay, as, as John previously said, with one-thirty has come and gone, we're not going to have uh, any
bids.
Any bids today, no bid openings and no contract awards, so we'll continue on. Before we adjourn, I have an item, emergency items or topics, the chair did not reasonably anticipate anything else at all of any importance. Before we adjourn, um, again, I want to mention that uh, today, I guess, was Quincy day for us. We started the day at nine-thirty at Quincy Court at Law Day. We have our meeting going, ongoing here. I want to thank Mayor Cook and Clerk Nicole Crispo for making the space available. I gave a brief history of, I was fortunate enough to work in this building for twenty-nine years of my life. So I was, again, a lucky guy. By way of introduction, everyone met Patrick Higgins, our county surveyor. Sitting with us at the table is Mr. Phil Mayantoska, who's manager of administration budgets. Director Cronin, who we met, and Assistant County Director, Bill Buckley. So that is our team. It's interesting today to note that after we leave today, we're going to travel to Walpole for a full meeting of our advisory board. Advisory board is made up of twenty-eight people, members of every city in town. They have budget responsibilities related with them several times a year. And this is the big end of their year or beginning of another year, depending how you look at it, to approve our budget for the year. And then we'll meet again in the fall, then around Christmas, then twice next year, so. Uh, they are a vital part of what we do, so.
I was going to say, before you close, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, I really enjoyed our trip to Quincy today, in all respects, and I think we should come back here again. Most of all, having a meeting here, it's a lovely chamber, lovely facility, it really is. Moving around a little bit, not saying every week, we don't want to abandon Dedham, but it's nice to get around in different parts of the county and uh, or maybe on certain days, certain times in a month, we can make it a point of coming to Quincy and maybe even on the city's trip.
We'll look at that. Okay, last call, as far as I'm concerned. A great, great job today, as everyone said, at the court, uh, court presiding justice, Mark Colvin, several judges and clerks, and a great shout out to Arthur Tobin, who I believe is the original clerk who started Law Day. I don't want to dare say it, twenty, maybe Mark Kroski can remember, but it's way back. And uh, they do a great job, it was just terrific. It was terrific to see so many people at Quincy Court, being the court
Right.
to the district court for surrounding towns of Randolph, Waymouth, Randolph, Avon, Cohasset, and Milton, I think I got all of them.
The chief of Cohasset was there today.
Bill Quigley.
Yeah, very nice. I think we'd be remiss if we don't offer congratulations to all the officers who receive citations and awards.
All recipients.
Mr. Morris, he did a great job.
D M R, he does a great job. He was able to meet and see, see Clint Tobin afterwards, and just a great day.
Great day, yep.
Okay, last call, I have nothing else.
Mr. Colvin?
Motion adjourned.
I move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, at one-thirty-four.
What's your made in second, in all favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.